Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is our regularly scheduled board meeting for November 5, 2019. We have our flag salute under the direction of Booker High School and Sergeant First Class, Retired John Ledbetter in charge. Would you please stand and salute the flag with me under their direction? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We already had a meeting today and they're already posted. Thank you, Booker High School. Our student representative is not here today and we don't have any special presentations.
Sorry, we do have one special presentation. This is Mrs. Goodwin's last day as chair, last meeting as chair, and as such, we would like to present her with a gift of thank you and appreciation.
Thank you very much. It's been my pleasure. I cannot say that I won't be happy, but thank you very much. Mrs. Higler.
I just wanted to thank you for your service. I know this last year's been tough and turbulent, but I greatly appreciate your service.
Thank you. And next up, we have the superintendent's report. Dr. Bowden.
There is no superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you. And next up, we have the hearing of citizens. I don't have any.
Here we go.
Thank you very much. First up is Saul Netherton from Sarasota. Saul? Or am I pronouncing it incorrectly or spelling is something? Saul? Sal? Maybe it's Sal? Next up is Griffith.
My name is Griffith and I'm a community member and organizer with Ansar Suncoast. I'm here today because I've been following Ms. Shirena Bonner's brave endeavor in pursuing justice in her workplace and to stand firmly in her support of her.
Excuse me. I'm having a hard time hearing you when you're talking really fast, so maybe closer and a little slower, please, so we can hear everything you have to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Earlier today, I attended the special meeting as called by the school board and was shocked, disappointed, and angry with the board's response, a motion shared by most who attended and evidenced by the pushback in public comments. At the last school board speak-out, 64 days ago on September 3, we were told by the board to await an objective external investigation report. Now here we have it. I need not waste my time parsing through it, though I encourage those who have not read it yet to read it, as enough time has been dedicated to doing so and frankly, the truth about Maltzby's harassment and Bowden and the district's complicity in it has been out for quite some time now. I will say that it is reprehensible that Bowden and the board's response to the investigation by Sprott Workplace Investigations and by proxy Ms. Bonner's recollections of sexual harassment and a hostile work environment has largely focused on Bowden's job security and condemning the conclusions found in the report that hold Bowden and other district members accountable for not stopping workplace violence. There's not been any care shown by the school board in taking Shirena seriously and treating her with respect, kindness, and dignity. In discussing the conclusions come to by Sprott, Bowden, and board members questioned Bonner in nitpicking her motives, intentions, actions she took, and actions she didn't take, and why. I'm glad to see that Ms. Bonner is fighting back against a system that was supposed to protect her. Shirena has been a high achieving, highly ranked school district employee before her workplace had been dampened by the persistent inappropriateness and constant threat to her and her family's safety and well-being. Sprott's report highlights most glaringly that the Sarasota school board has no infrastructure for workers' rights and for combating sexual harassment and violence. At every turn, Shirena faced challenges. Her complaints were not taken seriously, even up to today, with Bowden and his attorney picking apart every action she took and every word Bonner used to describe the harassment against her. The police department found no threat in the text stating snitches get stitches sent to her, and the text messages in her phone were leaked to the press against her autonomy and her wishes to maintain privacy, and all throughout it has been demonstrated that Bowden only moved swiftly to protect himself. I am also glad to see that the board voted in supermajority to see that Bowden will either be suspended or terminated. I hope that it is the latter, as Bowden has proved multiple times over and in multiple occasions, that he cannot be trusted to advocate for and maintain the safety of district employees and by extension, the students of Sarasota County. But according to Bonner and according to the people, the concerned citizens who have gathered here today to witness and to speak, and as evidenced not only in the handling of Bonner's case, but in the multiple cases of sexual harassment that have occurred in this district.
Thank you.
More has to be done.
Please, Anne. Thank you. No clapping, please.
My name is Maurice Richards. I live at 1210 Holly Fern Lane in Sarasota, have done so for 26 years. I'm retired, college educated, and a resident of Sarasota. Sarasota County Board has made many poor decisions during the past two years. These decisions have always been three to two in favor of Superintendent Bowden and against good business practices. His most recently superior rating and $5,000 bonus given by three board members is unconscionable. The board's own investigative report says the same thing. It's not the time to he said, she said, they said, I said. That's reported in the report, and I hope that Ms. Brown has not just to read the report, but what any ethical, moral individual will find is guilty of his lack of leadership or poor leadership. Never in my 50 years in business as an entrepreneur would I have tolerated any such actions had it been the janitor of my company. It's unconscionable. He takes no self-pride today other than being concerned about his retirement. It's not about Mr. Bowden's retirement. It's about the children of Sarasota County. The facts are clear, simple, and indisputable. The superintendent is not qualified nor ethically or professionally endowed for the job he holds. He has again failed to be a leader. His decisions and actions and inactions since May until this date tell the story. The questions this afternoon or this morning, the five-and-a-half-hour meeting I listened to from the comfort of my own home. I wasn't able to stand at this podium that long or to wait for that many speakers. The school superintendent has failed once again to perform his duties as prescribed. This board's legacy, and indeed is legacy of Ms. Brown, Ms. Volker. Jane, I must thank you for your objective return to the fold of reasonableness during your daytime. I commend you.
Thank you.
And thank you to you.
Next up, we have Dorothy Clark, and let's try to keep it as close to three minutes, please, as possible. I don't like to cut people off, but it is a three-minute conversation. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Dorothy Clark. I just got off the school bus. I'm on the school bus. I wished I had been here earlier, but I could not make it. I'm hoping that as you all sit here now, you've been here before, I spoke before, and what I'm hoping tonight is, I'm not going to speak long, but I'm praying for you, because you need prayers. Ms. Brown, I've known you a long time. I've known a lot of you a long time, because I worked with school over 20 years before I retired. I'm back again. And Dr. Bowden, you have this great Sarasota County school, and right now, you need to have a bag over your head to hide it for what you have did here. What you did to Shirena Bonner is uncalled for, and the people that have supported you, you don't have good luck when you do things like that. Something down the line, you're going to see it. Even when you go to bed tonight, you will not be able to sleep tonight for what you have did. You calling this young lady and her family a lot of hardships, a lot of tears, and afraid to go out of her door at night, even to come to work. I would have to call her several times a day to make sure she's okay. That's how afraid she was, with nobody here protecting her at all, nobody, nobody. What is wrong with this school board? You know our kids are suffering. We got kids right now going to half-day school because we don't have enough teachers to teach them. The bus drivers don't hardly get no pay. We losing bus drivers right and left, A's right and left. The pay is so low. I had a young man to tell me that goes to North Pole School. He works in the afternoon as an after-school program. He's getting $13 an hour. I don't even get $12 an hour. The bus drivers can't hire, we losing bus drivers, and the money that you all have give that man and Dr. Bowden could have been used. It could have been used to hire more teachers, more bus drivers, and more A's. Wake up Sarasota and get somebody here that's going to do something for the school board and stop getting flops in here. Now, he need to leave without a penny. Well, give him one penny anyway, help him out on the way. I got a penny in my pocket now if you need that. If you don't have one, call me and I'll give it to you, because I got a penny bank. Thank you.
No clapping, please.
Hello, my name is Carlton Loeffler, and I'm a senior at Pine View School. Unfortunately, I could not attend the convenient and accessible 12:00 PM meeting when all schools were in session and all working adults were at work. I'm here to support Shirena Bonner, and I just want to let all of you guys know that Sarasota County students do know what's happening at the school district. We are absolutely aware of what's happening, and we are all disgusted and really petrified at how you guys have treated Ms. Bonner. This does affect our students. The superintendent must be terminated for the gross mistreatment of Ms. Bonner, and I'd also like to add that I've been in this district since kindergarten at Southside, and I've met so many amazing faculty and staff in this district, and I find it absolutely impossible to believe that Mr. Bowden is the absolute best person to be in charge of this district. Jane Goodwin, you were at the Also Brunch, and although I'm happy that you were supporting LGBTQ students in the county, all the students at the brunch knew of the situation at the school board. We did not clap when Sarasota County Schools achieved that award. I would like to bring attention that if you want to support LGBTQ students in Sarasota County Schools, you have to support Shirena Bonner. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Merlin Jobson. I am homeschooled, and I want to say that this affects me personally, because when I got my first job at 16 years old, my manager, he got my phone number to ask me for things like, you know, can you work tomorrow? And it, in a few weeks, became things that I'm not going to mention in this room. And what I did about it was I quit. And to know that Ms. Bonner was even braver than I was, and she actually reached out and asked for the help that she needed, and she still didn't receive it when she needed it, breaks my heart. And it also makes me consider, as somebody in the student body of Sarasota, the fact that we are supposed to look to all of you for examples of doing the right thing and knowing that you are providing us safe environments in our schools. How are we supposed to trust you to give us those things when you can't even do it for your own employees? And how are we supposed to expect anything from you when you can't even provide each other safety and good work environments, which is not a luxury and it should be nothing more than necessity? Thank you.
Isaac Moncada? No, Isaac Moncada. Did I get that right?
Hello, I am Isaac Moncada, and I'm a senior at Sarasota High School, and I just want to tell the school board that I, us students are severely disappointed in all of your actions as to keep such a vile and putrid man such as Dr. Todd Bowden in office after all the horrible things he has done. And we cannot expect any sort of protection against all the things that the school county claims to protect us against if they cannot protect their own employees from it. And if you think that us students don't know what's going on, you are mistaken. Students, teachers, and faculty alike know what's going on. We talk about it in the classrooms. We talk about it in the halls, at the lunch table, outside of school. We know what's going on, and we are all severely disappointed with you. And we, and I believe that you all should be ashamed of your actions, just as any other person who would defend a man such as Todd Bowden should be. Thank you.
Please refrain from clapping. Get your hands in the air like this. How about that? Sorry. Person that we missed, Sal Netherton.
Thank you. My name is Sal Netherton. I'm a member of this community. I'm an organizer with Ansar Suncoast, and I'm a survivor myself, and I'm here again to address the lack of action from this board to stop sexual harassment and protect survivors in our community. We've all been watching and speaking out whenever we can for months while Ms. Bonner has been struggling to get us the safety and respect that she deserves, to get herself the safety and respect that she deserves. Like many of us, I've been here today. I was here at noon, and I was appalled by the lack of respect that you and the board have consistently showed towards the public and Ms. Bonner. How can you continue to deny the truth of what's happened and why? I don't need to repeat what's already been said better than me by other speakers, what's already been said in the report itself. The true facts speak for themselves. Through his actions, Bowden has shown himself to be irresponsible and untrustworthy at best, abusive and vindictive at worst. It's not just about him, though. Even though you said earlier today is about you, as a supervisor, no meeting should ever be about yourself. Your priorities should be the students and community that you serve. Your excuses and proposals distract from the real issue of stopping sexual harassment in this district in our community. This is what the people, students, parents, and teachers who are here, who you all work for, truly care about, not your bumbling attorney, not your desperate excuses, and not your petty personal differences, but securing justice at last for Ms. Bonner. Your disgraceful display today does nothing to change the district's policies for reporting and its sensitivity towards workers who are facing sexual harassment and other workplace abuses and discrimination, and today does absolutely nothing to make up for the pain that Shirena has been put through, the emotional, professional, physical, financial, and social costs that she has faced because of all of you. We still need to recognize the courage that it takes to speak up when you're facing any kind of abuse, especially sexual harassment. Abusers like Jeff Maltzby and Todd Bowden are experts at manipulating people and systems to protect themselves in their power, and we've seen that throughout this process. Too often, survivors are judged or doubted for being in a situation out of their control and asked why they didn't do something, or say something, or do more, or say more. Their every move critique exactly what Todd Bowden has done, has done to Ms. Bonner. To advocate for yourself, it takes incredible strength, and that's something that Ms. Bonner has had to do consistently in the face of mounting injustices and obstacles without the support from the school board that she should have received. Why was she never offered the counseling or protection after reporting that her superior had threatened her and created a hostile work environment? Why today do you have the audacity to stand here and give Bowden a platform to further attack and spread lies about her while you stand behind him? Caroline Zucker, earlier today, you sat here and you yelled at Ms. Bonner to sit down and be quiet after everything you put her through. When we were at the 12 o'clock meeting and she had something to say and she stood up and stated, you told her to be quiet. Jane Goodwin, you mentioned the, you not so subtly threatened her and anyone else who couldn't just sit quietly through this offensive charade when you mentioned the police and brought them in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I was here last year and spoke to you guys about breaking down barriers. I came and told you guys about my literacy problems and how I had to face them. And the challenges in my life. When I came to the school board and said of the complaints I had with Brookside, with my son being cursed at, with my son, my other son, his six-year-old, and Wilkinson, and then I was accused by school board members, called in children and families, and said that I sexually abused that six-year-old. That's right, Ms. Brown, you remember, because I was here standing up over there, and then you came to my house bearing gifts for my kids and asked me what I could do, what you could do. You said, what do you want, apology? I want things done about it, because I have disabilities, and my son's being written up and being picked on because I stood up for him last year. I could say we do have a problem of leadership in this county, one of the most wealthiest counties. You guys sit up here, you're supposed to be leaders. How am I going to tell you guys or show my children that you guys are leaders when you let that happen to me? You all should be ashamed of yourself. See these kids? They're leaders. I'm going to raise leaders with or without you guys. Thank you for your time.
Madam Chair, he stated that school board members reported, and I think it was within the school district.
No, ma'am, it was the school board. I have all the paperwork and people.
Well, the school board, it wasn't a member of the school board, it was from the school district.
Yes, ma'am.
But I thought we got a mentor for your son, but thank you and...
Still open. Now, this six-year-old is being taunted and picked on by the principal of Wilkinson, and if you can't even see the notes, and how can you write up a six-year-old for behavior issues when he was born drug addicted and the things that happened to him by his mother and then fatally accused me of it to discourage me from sticking up for my kids?
Mr. Satara, would you meet with Chris Renoff, our head of elementary education, please?
I would love to.
Out in the vestibule out front?
Thank you.
And make sure that he has your information. We'll get together and...
Thank you kindly, ma'am. I appreciate your time.
I would like to be the mentor for your child. I'm at Wilkinson very often, so I will be your mentor.
Lena Ruiz.
You know, I was asked to repeat my speech from this morning, but I just realized that's what it's about. So forget my speech. It's about that.
Kayla Sterren. I'm sorry if I have your name.
It's Stafford.
It's what?
Stafford.
Stafford?
Yeah.
Oh, those are your Fs, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay. So, hi, I'm a senior at Pine View, and as a victim of many different sexual assaults, I do find it disappointing that this board has found a way to hide behind Todd Bowden and his actions to cover sexual harassment occurrences up. I've never spoke up about them, never did anything about them until recently, and this is showing me that, like, the woman who was sexually harassed in this situation, she spoke up, and that inspires me to speak up like she did. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Wow, that's amazing that Raina did that. I'm sorry. Okay, I'm the attorney for Raina Bonner, and in front of Art Hardy, I'd like to speak to all of you. The taxpayers have paid $61,000 for Jeff Maltzby's paid leave, $72,000 for the independent report, $170,000 and more probably on the other sexual harassment case against Todd Bowden. If it goes to trial, it'd be over $100,000. But just with the 170, 72, and 61, we're up to $303,000. You hired one of the most expensive law firms to defend the claim against Raina, and also any amount paid to Bowden on his way out, hopefully, if he's on his way out. We, Ms. Bonner has filed a complaint for sexual harassment and retaliation, and she has a lot of, the liability is pretty clear. She's suffered so many damages, she lives in fear, her reputation has been dragged through the mud, she suffers emotional damages and many more damages, PTSD, and she cares about prevention of other women, other victims, fairness and justice, but she also understands the balance of taxpayer dollars. So we stand here today as representative of Ms. Bonner that we offer a settlement, a full financial settlement of $500,000 for her complaint, and that offer is, the deadline is close of business November 13.
Good evening. Shirley Brown, I addressed you at the board meeting about a comment you made about a little black girl. At that meeting, you insinuated that what I said was not true, but today, I would like to publicly thank you for sending me an apologetic email for the comments that you made. I am in good faith accepting that, and I am choosing to believe it was a heartfelt moment of clarity from you, where you realized that the things you say and do can be harmful or damaging to others. At that moment, I am thankful. So thank you for your written apology, Shirley. Caroline Zucker, the inconsistency in your public and private statements are exactly why I hesitated to share anything with you or this administration in the beginning. Recently, you said I'd never mention fearing for my life, but under oath during deposition for the investigation, you are now calling into question, you stated in the April meeting, you told Todd that... you told Todd that there was intimidation and harassment going on. The fact that you followed up with him following the April meeting to inquire if anything happened and made me go back and meet with Todd again shows your belief that Todd had not handled your initial disclosure of inappropriate behavior of the COO in accordance with the standards and expectations of the district. Your words, not mine. I will make sure he does what I told him to do, and we will meet. You have further gone to say publicly that you believe Todd needs more training. Given the fact that you all hired him as a superintendent, his capacity to be able to manage sexual harassment claims for an institution this size should have been one of the first considerations for your decision, especially given the years of his professional experience that he has had as an administrator in large institutions of education, and moreover, his personal experience with dealing with claims of sexual harassment. Earlier, I was cut off. So, in the investigation, Todd, under oath, the investigator asked you to look at an email from Al Horata dated May 16th. It said, "The initial verbal concerns reported on May 10th are hostile work environment, held back from advancements, sexual verbal harassment, indirectly threatening behavior, whistleblowing concerns." She asked you, "Was there anything in this email that was new to you?" You quoted, "I know it's a vague bullet, but the threatening behavior." Then she said, "Did Raina ask you, tell you early on that she was hesitant because of the relationship with you and Jeff?" You answered, "Oh, yes, she did, early on." And then she asked, "When did you first learn about snitches against stitches?" You said, "May 6th." But your dates are wrong.
And that ends the hearing of citizens. Do we have any additions or corrections to our agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Item A, the approval of the instructional classified personnel report, an addendum was added after the agenda was published.
May I have a motion?
Move approval of the consent agenda with the addition, with the addendum that was added.
Second?
Yes, I'd like to second that, but I'd like clarification. Is this the amendment where Mr. Maltzby will no longer be in our employ?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Thank you. I second that.
I think we can vote electronically. Are we voting electronically? It's not coming up.
But we could do it by the time we figure it out. Let's do aye. They need the...
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Ayes carry, five to zero. Moving right along to new business. The first item is item number 43. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the school board approve the new job description for ESE paraprofessional as presented.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Please vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, please say nay. Ayes carry, five to zero. Item number 44.
I'm sorry. I move that the school board approve the new job description for service response clerk as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Ziegler?
Can we just get some clarity on this particular position? Dr. Bowden?
Yeah, I'm going to ask Jody to speak to it. He's going to head this way.
So we have two positions in facility services that are currently classified as SSP-6, administrative assistants. This job description would more clarify exactly what they do for job duties, their compositions funded in facility services.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? Ayes carry, five to zero. Item number 45.
I move that the school board approve the Gocio Elementary Community Partnership School Grant proposal to the University of Central Florida Community School Grant Program as presented.
Amen. Amen. Second. It was...
Any discussion, Mr. Robinson?
My first question is, Dr. Bowden, will we have a workshop on this? Because this is a -- what I could see is a pretty massive undertaking, more so than just, you know, applying for the grant. It appears to be it's going to be step one in something that's going to be a paradigm shift, at least, in Gocio, and I think from the newspaper, talking about other schools. Will we, will there be an opportunity to workshop this issue at some time in the future? If so, when?
Yes. So I think you're exactly right. It is a major opportunity for the district. We have submitted on behalf of Gocio Elementary School, after having some conversation about whether Emma E. or Gocio would be the lead school. Our intent is to ultimately implement the community partnership school model at Gocio Tuttle and Emma E., and so we'll spend some time on it. This was a grant that was made available earlier that we did not respond to during the grant window. They reopened it, and so we were up against a timeline. Normally, we would workshop it before bringing you the GAF, but we needed to...
Do you have any expectation of when the workshop would be, that we'd workshop this?
We have not counted it out at this point.
I would think maybe the first of the year, but just based on what I see coming ahead.
Before March?
Before March.
Before the end of tax season.
Before March, yes.
Before the end of tax season.
We'll get it as soon as possible. In fact, maybe we could do it in December. I don't know. But I want to thank Carol Lerner, who happens to be in our audience, because I know she was a great supporter of this community partnership program, and I know that Dr. Bowden worked with both she and other members of our community to make this happen. And of course, it's a lot of wraparound services. It's the same kind of thing that the Hinsons were talking about from Harvard, coming down and availing the community and getting the community right there on campus with medical and mental health, and actually having some offices. Right now, it's already in implementation stage in a number of other communities, but closest to us is Manatee Elementary. So they started their implementation in the fall, and they will implement all this year and open in that school next September, is what I understand. And they're very excited about it, and I think the leadership that we have at Gocio certainly works well with it, but hopefully, it won't take a lot of the time of the principal of the school. So we're delighted with that as well. Mrs. Ziegler.
Thank you. So I have, I know enough, but I don't feel like I know, I know some, I guess, rather than enough. And I know Raina Benzini has shared some information about community schools and the concept, and I do think there's a lot of value there. So I am glad we'll have a workshop on it, because I just want to make sure we understand all the moving parts, because it is, seems like it's, based on the article, somewhat of a significant changeover. And I don't know who, I mean, are we still the authorizer? I mean, is it kind of set up like a charter school? So, I mean, I've just read various things. But before we get the grant, I mean, and I just want to, I feel like there needs to be a lot more information, I guess, of supporting it.
Sure. And that's a big statement, so before it gets away, I just want to make sure that we're on record. It does not change the governance structure of the school. It does not change the academic operations of the school. What it does is it brings in partnership entities to come alongside of the school that provides for coordination and support for those services and brings them there on campus. But it remains under the governance of the school board. And then there is a partner agency that works with us to provide supports above and beyond.
And it's federally approved? I think I read it was federally approved.
Well, it's a state grant administered by the University of Central Florida, and the lead agency is the Children Home Society of Florida.
Okay. So, yeah, lots of questions, but I look forward to learning more.
It's really quite exciting. Mrs. Brown?
Yes, it sounds exciting to me also, and I've heard some things from Ms. Lerner about that. It seems to me that this seems to be a lot like what we used to have full-service schools, and in fact, what the Hope Scholarship Program was doing for some private entities that are going into failing schools. And I would hope to, you know, I'm glad to see that you don't have to have a failing school to get these additional services. I mean, am I correct in saying it's a lot like what they're doing there, bringing in additional services for the schools?
So Schools of Hope doesn't have a mandate for the community school partnerships, but many of them are utilizing the additional dollars to provide those supports and to go into underserved neighborhoods. But this is a separate and distinct program, but certainly some of the principles of it are similar.
Well, good. I'm glad we were able to access something without having to have a failing school to do it, because I think we can be proactive rather than reactive, and I really applaud you and all the work you've done, Ms. Lerner. Thank you.
Mrs. Ziegler?
Sorry. I just, and again, so what's a timeline like this? Because I still have a lot of questions, and I think on its basis, there's a lot of value in it. I always, this will be no surprise to some, but when I hear medical facilities on campus, I just want to make sure we have very clear understanding of what that is. It's something that's a concern of mine in general. So just want to make sure there's, if this is the first step, if they reopened it, we're approving this, but what's that timeline and from this actually happening?
And so one of the things that is missing from the title of this grant, and I do think it's significant, is this is not the actual grant proposal. This is a planning grant that allows us to answer a lot of those questions. And so it gets a staff member assigned. The staff member would be an employee of the Children's Home Society, who then works with our community partners to come up with the plan. And so many of the questions that you have is what the planning is all about. How does that work? What services are going to be provided? Whose governance do they fall under? Who's going to pay for them? So this is a planning grant. So if accepted, we go into a planning phase of which we then resubmit to actually implement the model.
Very important clarification. Thank you very much.
Mr. Robinson?
I do want to point out, although I know it's not a conflict, but I was a member of the Board of Directors of Children's Home Society, and it's my understanding that we, I say "we," I shouldn't say it anymore because I'm no longer on the board, but that Children's Home Society was the fiscal agent. And so what you're saying is our plan would not have them as the, sound like to you, that it'd be underneath the district, and the Children's Home Society would not be the fiscal agent? Although I love the Children's Home Society.
Okay. So the Children's Home Society is the fiscal agent for the companion services. We still have governance over the school, the principal, the AP, all the teachers, guidance counselors. They remain on your payroll. This is a separate organization that comes alongside of the school.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes carry, five to zero. That ends new business. Few announcements. Do we have any announcements? Mrs. Brown?
I just wanted to clear up a few things in the community, the hearing of citizens. We did not give Dr. Bowden a $5,000 bonus as, and I'm sorry, I've got this thing going on with my back, and when I take one of those bills, I can't always get the sentences out. But it has to do with the, that $5,000 bonus. We didn't give it to him when we reevaluated. It was something that he earned due to test scores from the previous year. The contract that we had approved ends those bonuses for teachers, for the school scores. So that was the last year, and that was left over from his previous contract. And I don't want to re-mention the gentleman's name and his children, but when he came here last year, his son left a jacket, and I, he didn't live too far from me. I took it to his home, and I spent over an hour in his home that night, and I went back again. And I met with both principals, the middle school and the elementary school. I talked with his teacher, who was giving him extra help, and I also worked with the principal over at the middle school, and I thought we appointed the SRO as a mentor for him, and hopefully that he will get some help talking to our executive directors. In regards to Mrs. Bonner, I went to her that day to support her. I don't know how it got twisted, but it did. And when she was offended by it, I apologized, and I'm glad she has accepted her apology. But I know that she came forward, and one of the things she was concerned about was advancement, and she felt she was held back by that. I don't know if we can still look into that, or even if it matters. But I, for one, would like to say that if she is still interested in a job that's out there that we have, that, you know, I would support her trying to get that, and I want to make sure that, and I don't think there's any one of us that would try to hold anything against her. And so I would hope that if there's still something out there that she's looking for that we could help her with, because that was something that I believe those, I didn't know about it at the time, but I know that there were several people that talked to her that said they would support her, and I know that I will add my name to that list. If she's looking for another position in the district, I'll support her. If she wants to stay in the position that she's in, you know, I don't know if she has to be approved for that by the new person that's going to be in there, but, you know, I'll support her in whatever she wants to do job-wise in this district.
Any other discussion? I just want to make a few announcements. Our next monthly work session will be Tuesday, November the 19th, 2019, at a time to be determined. A litigation meeting regarding the ESE case is on Tuesday, November 19th, at 1:00. The reorganization of the School Board and Finance Corporation meeting is Tuesday, November 19th, 2019, at 2:45 PM. And our next regular board meeting is Tuesday, November the 19th, 2019, at 3:00 PM. And I'm so happy to say this is my final gavel. Good night to you all.
Wait, I have one more question. And it's a question that we have, if we don't get something, because I'm still concerned about getting those, well, maybe it won't, because he's going to be here for 30 days to try to still work something out to get the teachers, or maybe it doesn't matter. But I'd still like to try to work something out so that we can distribute the bonuses by the end of the year, or whatever we're going to do. But if we could do that, I don't know if it's possible even, but I would hope that maybe we could at least reach out and try to, you know, as they say, put egos aside and sit down and try to talk. I would appreciate that.
Anything else? We adjourn.